I did not prepare books tonight. Honestly, there's, I've got a lot of items on the list, but very few of them don't take much discussion. Or wasn't much put into a book, so I didn't do that. Pick it specially here. We'll hold off on bike and pet ordinances and metal building ordinances. We'll see if he shows up. I don't have it first on my list. But let's go ahead and talk a little bit about budget, finance, report. My thought was that there's a lot of items that we can't get to in a council meeting concerning finance. And it's always one of the last reports usually will be on ready to go home. So rather than make it last on the item, I thought some things maybe Lisa would like to talk about and give you an update on.
I did kind of go through everything today. I looked at our cash. We've got in the general fund, cash reserves to fund four months, about four months. Water fund, about five months. And that's about where we work at year end. So we did good there. I looked at our debt. This year, we've got fifty-two thousand in the general fund, the tool ring. And next year, another twenty-one thousand. The original of those balances were close to four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. So that'll help out with our payment. In the water fund, we've got a hundred-and-ninety thousand. One of our chief endos is a tool ring. And nineteen, the original balance of that was almost one-point-eight million. I looked, I looked for our revenues. We've collected ninety-five percent of our twenty-seventeen bills that we've sent out, property taxes.
Wow.
Plus the budget in the general fund. It looks like, when y'all look at the report, and it'll look like we're a little low. But that fire truck, I budget for the proceeds of the loan. And I budget for the expenditure, so it'll still look a little low. And the water fund, we're pretty close to budget. I want to get with you and David next week. We need to watch it pretty close because we budgeted some prior year fund balances in there. And I hope we not get, have to get to that. And I want to find out what he's planning on the rest of the year. The lead rate's doing real well right now, the rain. It's like a sixty-three, sixty-four percent there. And fifty-eight percent's where we should be right now, so we're doing, we're doing good with that. I got a letter from the State Department of Audits. They had reviewed our audit report and no findings. We're all in compliance there. And I spoke to the Jima rep, I told you this, about our extra FEMA money, that FEMA Jima money we requested from the generator. The generator is in, is complete. We talked about that. But she, she said they're still reading it at FEMA. And hopefully she'll know something by the fifteenth of this month. If y'all have any questions, I forgot my paperwork, but anytime, just let me know. I'll be glad to look it up for you if I don't know it right offhand.
And another part of, you were talking about the debts. Lisa did go out and shocked the note for the Integra property and found a better rate than they offered us. And property has been surveyed now. I know you had someone question you about whether it's all included. I look at Q public and I say it is. But when we survey the property, we'll know for sure. So hopefully that can be closed out fairly quickly.
Did we approach Integra and give them a chance to match the better rate?
No, have not.
They had offered to go point oh-one of a percent if we would move all our deposits there.
Yeah.
I'd agree with you.
Mine's a little. And we made an agreement, it just doesn't.
Yeah, that's.
We need to squabble back and forth. But we won't, we'll determine that.
So we're pretty much on budget this time. Where are we from last year?
Year end, percentage wise, we're pretty close to where we should be. We'll start watching it very, I always watch it real far from here on out. I'll start getting nervous.
Starts getting antsy about the time that coming into the year. I will say that I filled a couple of positions in the last few weeks. We'll have one retirement in December in the meter reading department. So we'll bring someone in there to train with them in preparation for the retirement. And.
And is that, that's like forty-six years or something? He's been with us?
Boy, I'm, I'm, I'm a long time.
I think it's like forty-seven years or something.
It doesn't surprise me.
Wow, I didn't know that, that long.
I think it is. I think it looks.
But he's quite excited. All right. This first item's one that I think's probably going to take more time and discussion than a lot of the others. I have done some work as directed by council on garbage service. Talked to two different vendors that would be the only two within a thirty, forty mile radius. And I probably stretched that a little bit. I'm not sure, how far is Ranger from here? Ranger, not that long, okay. But I do have two proposals. One little bit, well, let's not bore you with costs right now. Both of them would, would have to purchase the canisters. And it would be primarily a on-street pickup rather than backdoor like we do now. Had an opportunity to talk to a lot of folks about the garbage service the other day. And everyone that called. Backdoor service is very important to them. City's been doing it that way forever. Many of them, and I talked about the need for a new garbage truck and what that would cost and the money we're putting into it. Many of them suggested they increase the rates. And the rate can take it. But in order to finalize negotiations with the two vendors, I need some guidance. Is backdoor service something that you see us wanting to continue even if we go with a vendor?
I do.
Yes.
For sure.
So give me some background. Does everybody get background service? I mean, for all intents and purposes?
Yeah.
If requested, yes. I'm probably one of the few that doesn't request it.
And you put it down on the street?
My neighbor puts it down on the street.
But the rates are the same for everybody?
Yes. And there's some chance these people would do a backdoor service, still using the canisters, their rolling cans, but there would be an annual fee. If a backdoor service is required, then I need to go back to them and say, what's that due to your cost?
I think the opportunity of the choice, if you will, is absolutely. At this juncture in time, I think we would be asking for a lot of negative impact if we said we're not going to even offer it. And so I think.
I agree.
And I'll be honest with you, it's five, six dollars more a month for a new pickup with the back door. I don't have a problem. Because it's for the Venus of Cindy not having to dodge a trash can every time she backs out on Thursday morning. It's a lot.
The goal is to get better service for everyone. Better performance, better service, going this route with more uniformity with the cans in our city. I think that would be beneficial to all. Even if there is a small increase for backdoor pickup through a vendor, you know, the discussion we just had for our new truck, you know, our rates could increase. Well, who's to say that these vendors may come in and have a cheaper rate? If you want backdoor pickup, they may match what we're currently charging them. So I think it's still worth looking at.
Well, I agree with Doc, the choice he gives them, if they want to pay a little bit of money or if they want to pay for it, I think that's awesome. That's better than what they're giving now.
That's a better service, absolutely.
Jim, Lisa stepped out, but you said it, we're pumping about a quarter of a million dollars in there?
Yeah, and let's verify that with Lisa. But the garbage service is supported by taxes of approximately a quarter million.
And that includes the past purchase and upkeep of the truck?
Oh, that'd be more.
Yeah, no, it's in there, it should be in there.
The upkeep of the truck is in there.
Which has been substantial. I mean, that truck has taken a beating because of how much it's used and the trauma it's on.
I think I gave you those numbers. And I hope they're still in my package here. But.
Now, on record here, it's.
Part we have spent fifty-three thousand dollars since two thousand twelve, and labor fifty-eight thousand.
When did we buy it?
Ten years ago, two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight.
That's what the mayor told me.
Yeah, and what news neither.
Now, we do run two trucks.
Small truck.
Yeah. We do have a second.
Yes.
So even though I know this wasn't what was leaked out, the part of buying, if you want to look at this, is not the, is the healthy part, it's not the hurt. On Christmas Day, I was sitting in my, nice warm room, looking at Christmas presents, having eggnog. And those guys were picking up trash. I mean, with the quality of their life, I'd rather cut their overtime, increase their salary, and they make the same money and have a little bit better shot spending some time with the family on holidays.
Yes.
I could do less part of it, too.
Quality of living for everyone, employees included.
Lisa, let me, my comment, doing one, we're talking about garbage service. Where the sanitation department subsidized through general taxes to the.
Not general fund, we sub, we sub-sold it to the water fund.
Water fund, but subsidizes to the tune of about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Yeah. So that's, I wonder what she does with it. Yeah, it's, for the year, year and forty-five is what we kind of were estimating.
Two forty-five. All right, well, that, I think that gives me what I need to know to finalize this. And honestly, my suspicion, my fear is that that's going to drive the cost up where it's going to be much more than what we're paying now. But we're doing due diligence.
Unless there's some way we can justify that I hadn't seen it, I wouldn't want to charge people for something they're not getting. So in other words, charging all of our water customers a garbage rate when they're not utilizing. To me, that just doesn't seem right.
What is the current charge? Is it fourteen a month?
Fourteen, stop, is that a year?
Fourteen.
Fourteen is fourteen.
I think we're going to be impressed, I think.
Us people over sixty-five get a two-dollar discount.
Well, I have something to look forward to in many years to come.
Congratulations.
The billion dollar woman in Jones' name now.
I know I'm married to an older woman for some reason.
And the race, eh?
No, it isn't.
And attorney's number is what?
God, with thirty now.
Okay, that gives me what I need to do. I can, I think I can get this finalized fairly quickly and come up with a recommendation for council. Any other questions on this? Anything else that's important to you on garbage?
And we discussed.
That's a wonderful statement.
But I know I had questioned you about, because, you know, we don't want to see anybody lose their job, that they would still have jobs, they'd just be in a different apartment or.
Went, one day last week, after I had talked to all the vendors, potential vendors, it just got in my mind, I need to talk to the employees. So I did explain to them, we're not looking to have them lay off. There's other positions here, possibly something, a light eater in what you're doing now, a light player. Kept them clean.
So in all transparency, another option would be to compete with these people that we're getting bids from. Is that, so in other words. As far as they have customers in the city, we could try to compete with them.
We could start advertising our prices to folks and probably encourage, would encourage a lot of folks to take the service.
Well, we don't have any customer, I mean, we only have how many in the city, the.
Five, thirty?
Four hundred and.
I thought we were top hundred.
Five hundred.
Well, it's four-hundred-and-fifty-six customers on class on trash, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven residential. And then we've got some businesses on there. But the housing authority has considered one customer. And it's actually a hundred-and-twenty-eight pickups.
So we don't really know how many customers Walden has been found.
No, I have no idea.
Crystal Simon has none at this juncture in time.
My understanding. Okay, hey, if you wake up tonight and decide that you want me to include something else on this, call me in the morning, don't call tonight.
That's for me, I have texted him or emailed him late at night, he replies instantly. And I don't mean for him to do that.
I've been doing some late, the last two weeks, too.
Early, you're late at night, sunny's early.
Believe me, I know, he called me last week.
Early.
Like seven-thirty.
Trying to get ready for the day.
No, it's you know. Seven-thirty, I'm here.
You're one of the, from the generation of instant gratification, I mean, uh.
I've got, I've got it on both sides with you two, so it doesn't bother me.
Yeah, I'm glad we.
You're on the good list.
Yeah, yeah, they are. Okay, y'all know we went through the leak detection. Got good results. If you look at the water loss in July seventeen, it was thirty-one point eight percent. July eighteen is twenty-two point three. Pretty good improvement. David Hall has talked to the state, folks that are approving, that would have to approve our permit for increasing the amount of water that we can treat. And explained the situation, they are very pleased. He did tell them that he plans on having in his budget request, a light amount of money to look at meters next year and continued leak detection. They're even more pleased. And verbally said, didn't put anything in writing, that this would go a long way toward getting us the permit that we're looking for, permitting increase that we're looking for. So that's good news.
Joe, are you aware of any Georgia Power programs that either supply meters or have some sort of smart meters that they.
Connected?
Connected, connected. One of the guys is the curtain hour, actually, the water sewer meeting at Savannah. And they mentioned the Georgia Power program.
They've got so many new programs going on now. They're doing cameras, they're doing everything, so that.
There is a program on them. I talked to a company that sells water meters. And they explained to me that their meters could be polled by the same part, by Georgia Power. While they're polling the electrical meters, they can be polling the water meters.
I just want to know if there's any money there for that or not, maybe not.
I don't know, there's something we'd have to look into. I mean, that's not a, not real. That's under their.
You're talking about crack money. I'm talking about actually reading the meters.
But I do know this, the FEMA's in Savannah, we talked to several of the ones that were there. I mean, they got them that you can turn them off from up here, they got me to turn them on from here. They made, they said, you know, they gave us prices, prices are pretty reasonable. We wouldn't be able to do it all at one time, we'd do about twenty percent this year versus next year.
They told us mechanical meters, average being accurate for about four or five years is all.
Well, they're mechanical. They're all subject to.
My meter's been in for twenty. Well, we've probably changed them out since we moved here, but like one time.
I know that when we switched over to the AMI meter up here, we were one of the first ones. Mama still had an old four dial at her house. And her power bill was like twenty-five dollars. Oh, she was mad at me. But basically what it was, was mechanical meters wear out. And hers was like a hundred years old, so, you know, she was definitely doing better with the old meter. But the new potential meters, they're dead on. And also, too, the other good thing about it is that they kick out and you see a whole lot of rush. We found out we got a water leak, so we can get up there and say, look, I'm going to have to eat this much water. And nobody lets you turn it off.
Yeah, from what I understand, there was a system, from what I understand, if you see an increase that's substantial, the system will alert you. If you see a decrease that is substantial, the system will alert you, there's a bias.
The riggers will poll.
Yes.
If you want to do it every night, you can poll every, every night. And if you see an unreasonable increase or decrease, it'll come to your system as an exception report.
But for the system to do it, though, it'd be like what I said, that's my option that you'd have to choose to pick on the meters. Because each meter, that meter can do more stuff than you ever thought it could ever do. But you got to be willing to pay the fee to do it. So that's, that's how they make a money.
And I'm assuming this is a question for Mr. Hall. Our twenty-two point three percent, do we believe that would be a significant decrease once we have the system completely changed over on smart meters, if that's the route the city goes? Do we believe that would substantially?
That would increase our leak protection, really, truly.
On the last exit.
There's still a lot of houses around here, still got polypropylene water lines. They just ain't busted yet.
And I think you're right, doing small percentages over extended period of time.
Lots of homes built in the seventies still with the.
Well, the thing is, you do twenty percent the first year and see if we're even, if it's working, you know?
Well, I, my intent is to at least have in the budget for y'all to look at monies to continue this program of looking for leaks and giving the state that good feeling that we are.
Or at least trying.
We're making that effort.
And I'm like, Doc, I think there might be some kind of friend or something out there we could get to show that we're not wasting the water.
My bet you'd take with the delivery, sir. All right. Just as information, we did have a water line break up in Hunter's Ridge that damaged the driveway. About thirty feet of concrete to the driveway, so we're getting together quotes to fix the content. Of course, the leak's been fixed. Getting together quotes for the insurance company. This be an insurance claim or a potential insurance claim. Generator at Cove Road is complete and operational. The, lower the permit to do the new well that council approved some meeting ago has been approved and that work will start. Not sure we need a whole lot more water after this last week, but we'll have that potential. Earlier this week, met with Robert and some of his road group, Tim and some others, about paving the remaining roads that are part city, part county responsibility. Best example I can give you is Camp Road. Right off of five fifteen, we're responsible for a park that goes up just beyond Amacola Electric. And then it becomes county responsibility, and then it's our responsibility again at Wendy's and Bojangles. Makes absolutely no sense for us to go in, pave park, and then they'll come in sometime later and take the middle. We need to start at the front and they agree with that. So we've looked at a number of roads that we're going to be able to work with and everybody get a better job. It's going to be cheaper to, no one wants to stage to do two-inch Camp Road. And they're going to charge a premium for it. So we got a plan for that. He's to get us through this next paving project, which we will be, a paving project before council for this fall, another one. And so I think that's something that's going, well, it gives some benefits down the road.
Question about, that's Camp Extension, right?
Yes.
Someone has gone on the sides, if you've traveled that road recently, extended a little bit.
County.
Is that road wide enough? Or does it need to be looked, I know our emergency crews from the county are using that road nonstop. Does it truly need to be, when we go into paper, is it going to be widened or will it remain the same?
The county is going to do everything they can to get some more road.
It's well needed.
Jim, we talked today.
And it's probably going to be two-inch paved because of the emergency equipment we're talking about.
Yes, and that was the concern, is you know, those folks need to get where they're going, they need to get there fast. That road's not suitable for them, are they?
No, it's pretty safe shape.
Yes.
We talked today briefly about Crystal's corner there. And I reached out to her today to reach out to you, so you can expect a call from her.
Okay.
She's had some communications with DOT and even did a citizen study of some sort. So I just want to make sure that is, again, not to, I'm not trying to squeeze it in here on, maybe that'll still be some other time, but I did want her to share that, and she said she would.
Ann brought me the social media policy last week and asked him. It's a policy we passed three years ago. And ask if we are, if that's what we are actually using. I have it here, I have not worked on it yet. Just to let you know, I'm negligent in that.
It just seems everybody takes to social media, there's nothing we can do about some of the other people. But I think we certainly need to be able to do something about our employees.
Yeah, and we, and the, anything the city puts out on social media comes from one or two people. I feel, I feel good about.
Yeah, I do, too. But you know what we were talking about, where that lady got on. And I know, like I said, you can't control people out, but we certainly need some kind of restraints for us and employees as to what we put out there and make sure that we've got just the one or two people and they're not beating the city out.
Absolutely. We don't want to overwhelm those that are in charge of our social media. You know, one thing I learned at class in Savannah is if we don't respond or acknowledge something on social media that's directed at us, someone will. So we need to take every opportunity, and I, I tested that, obviously, we've had discussions about that. And the majority of the negative comments I approached on Facebook, with a positive light, I walked away with a good experience. And those people were very understanding. A lot of it was just, they were not heard. And once their, you know, communication opened up.
But we need somebody to be the mouthpiece.
Yes.
We need somebody that needs to be.
Hundred percent.
To do that, that's their responsibility.
Yes, I agree. That's what I'm saying. We, we certainly don't want it to be overwhelming to one. But if we have one or two, make sure they're zoning in on it and applying and acknowledging.
And verify it.
Yeah, social media can be really negative, but we, we have the opportunity to even address the negative side of things with facts. And oftentimes when you bring facts, it puts that positive spin on it and people appreciate that.
And if you don't know the answer, say you'll get them.
Yes, absolutely.
And that, that's what I'm trying to do on phone calls to see y'all.
Absolutely.
Is get back to focus it. It's been very good excepting. Sure, there's people that want to climb up one side of your bike and down the other.
Yes.
To then maybe make two trips. But, uh, if you return the call, it's generally, uh, well accepted.
Yes.
So, I owe you some work on that and we will get that done. Got a request from a downtown merchant, Main Street merchant about a loading zone on, uh, Park Whitfield. It would take away a parking area back there. Actually, we have it for two businesses on Main Street, both of which would be backing onto Whitfield. I'm getting together the cost of what that would be, uh, what, what the cost would be. My intent, unless council's got a better idea, is if somebody wants it back there, we're considering. But they're gonna have to pay for the pay.
Pay for the strike.
Strike. And it's not expensive. I don't think we're talking hundreds of dollars here. But what's your feelings on that? Uh, one thing that would concern me is, um, I don't want it to be designated parking for vehicles in the back. It's a loading zone. It's not a parking area.
Would interfere depending on how big, whatever they're loading or unloading, because there's a lot of traffic through there.
Businesses that have done it for years. Many sizes of the trucks aren't gonna be any different than they are now.
The spots that are currently there, they're looking at converting. Are they currently using that for their business?
Yeah.
So, technically, they're the one losing their spot. No one else, if that makes sense.
But the thing is, is I drove them all over and I load on Mark Whitfield and up on Main Park Street where, cause Main Street's bad enough.
That's the positive. That's the positive.
Once they lose those spots where they don't, they're, they're gonna have their.
So, that was my question, is if you have that as a designated loading or unloading zone and they're using it for their parking, can they still park them?
Yeah, they have to.
Think they don't want traffic. Wouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue.
Mark Whitfield after two o'clock isn't, uh, there's not many, not many cars parked there.
Yeah, but Mark Phil at seven thirty in the morning is a madhouse.
Yeah.
So, I mean, maybe we say it's all right to do it or restrict the hours.
Anyone that's changed, I don't know if you're aware of what the school was doing there, but they're picking up over on Sanders Street, uh, now.
Sure was nice too.
So, we can do restrict the hours, but then you gotta enforce them.
Well, it is something to look at. And parking just keeps popping back up, you know? I know the downtown merchants talking, we don't have any parking and of course, the court thing is an issue. I mean.
Well, I mean, it's, the parking is basically the parking we've always had, getting back when we still had parking each. I mean, if anything, we've got more parking between the parking lot out from the courthouse, which is a long ways away, but it's there. And now with us getting Integra, that's gonna help a little bit, you know?
We have a lot of empty lots that surely could be parking lots. We have parking lots that aren't full.
A lower lot at Integra.
Lower left lot at Integra, Bill's lot, um, you know, Jackie's lot.
Or Georgia Bank.
It's not technically parking, but, um, I think it's a matter of eventually getting together with these people and striking something out there.
And we've got property on South Main.
Right, that was out of the, uh, person thing was getting the, the van on south of, uh, old Main Street that was thinking about maybe putting parking down there too.
So, uh, are you comfortable with the merchants being asked to pay for the striping? I'll continue with that. Pet ordinance, flight ordinance, metal building ordinance, uh, Bill's not here. He could not get, uh, copies of the ordinance to you. We, it, we had said we'd send you an electronic copy. Elena is not working this week, so he hasn't been able to get it to me. We'll get that too. Earlier, whatever earlier meetings, council approved looking at some property on Lily Street. Families looking to donate the property to the city. Bill is, uh, looking at that for me. We're not sure that, uh, the, uh, ownership may be in multiple, uh, names. That make it real difficult and very expensive for us to, to do the transfer. We're talking, it could cost up to thirty-five hundred, four thousand dollars to.
Accept a gift.
To accept, accept a gift. So, uh, I may have some more information for the, for y'all now.
It's sort of like all quick claim dated to one person and then turn it over to us.
We gotta figure out where the family is in this.
Gotcha.
Working with Serveline, they have come to us, uh, with a proposal to provide insurance to our water customers, uh, that would, um, allow them to, um, be made full in case of water leaks. Right now, if we have someone that's got a water leak, gets undetected, we get a high bill, the city will make an adjustment based on three years, uh, three months average use. This would mean, if we had this coverage, would mean that city would not be giving adjustments. And, uh, if people could be made full by the insurance company. It would, it's, it's also a possibility that they, uh, could give coverage for people to repair the water leaks. Don't know the cost yet. Uh, we just completed a survey. Rachel put together, uh, the numbers they need to, uh, give us, uh, a estimate of cost. Hopefully, we hear something back about that real soon.
Is it the insurance company or?
Do we know?
Insurance company.
Do we know what we lose in adjustments?
Last year, eleven thousand. I was, I was sort of surprised, uh, with the amount. Eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars last year on water, three thousand eight hundred on sewer. Prior year, nine thousand sixty-three. And year for that, sixty-eight hundred, fifty-nine hundred.
And she said the customer pays half in the.
We split it, yeah.
And that's our.
Take the average. Jeep Fest coming up, uh, Friday, August thirty-first. The Jeep Fest will be having a Jeep show and shine. Starts at six o'clock and goes through, uh, with a concert that ends at ten o'clock. I'll be bringing you a request to approve that, uh, like Monday night's meeting.
Concert on Friday or Sunday?
Friday, the thirty-first.
Are they going to close downtown?
Yeah, yeah. It's a request to close downtown.
Close down.
Close down, yeah. Last year was pretty well attended.
Do we hear the, the nine hundred already signed up on it or something?
I had not heard.
I would add, they get no smaller.
No.
I agree.
Planning and zoning commission's gonna be hearing a, a request from property owner to include a planned urban development on, uh, it's the Gateway Project on Winona Way. On that, uh, there may be a need for a special meeting. Investors in this, uh, have requested a decision by the thirty-first, uh, of August. The, uh, planning and zoning meeting is scheduled for the twentieth. So, if, uh, if approved by them, if there's, we get a decision, planning and zoning, we can probably call for a special council meeting, uh, to discuss this sometime between the twentieth and the thirty-first. So, that's just a heads up.
Did we talk to them or had any more contact about not just getting their recommendation, but kind of seeing maybe what some of the controversy was after this last one that we had? Instead of them just coming to us and saying, well, our recommendation is, and you don't have any idea who's done what with them.
This will, this will be contentious, uh, upon them bringing to council a formal plan of, of the pub to be approved.
So, if y'all go down.
Does that answer your question?
If y'all go to your ordinances online, um, I can, and I, I thought I had the section number. It probably will, both of us all kind of start familiarizing ourselves with this, uh, and what the kind of purposes are and, and the requirements. Um, it's a very, it's a special section, um, because I think there's, um, Mayor Weaver mentioned it when we were having the conversation about the, um, last property. But this is, um, a little bit of a different use that I think, um, people are gonna try to latch on to, to try to either in, increase or decrease the density of these subdivisions, you know, these multi-use properties, which are, probably never catching on all over the country where they kind of tag these residential areas with either single homes and or townhouses and some of them even apartments with retail areas and, you know, self-contained areas. So, you might want to at least read up on that.
Yeah, I did a few of those going down in Smyrna. Those things are really, they want zero setbacks, which is just nuts. I don't believe in zero setbacks. And then they come in and they'll have a house this far between each other so they can call it a house. But if they just went that far, it'd have been a, find a million or an apartment type of, but they won't be able to call it a house. They, they get tricky with it.
Our zones are all in, I mean, they, I think we have a minimum of ten.
Yeah.
And they want five. And I mean, there's gonna be some things that, um, and here's what you gotta think about.
Water lines, utilities, stuff going in between how they want to serve, where they want places to put the meters, where they're gonna be able to fix the meters when they're broken and they will have the equipment, get them ready, gonna be done with hand deal. There's a lot to, to look at.
The builder in this particular project did some properties down off of, in, uh, Ball Ground and, uh, something to look at.
Yeah.
I'll send that to you, Kurt, for the message. Email, though. Phone call system.
So, that's something to look forward to. Uh, another potential meeting. County Commissioner, I have requested, uh, Robert set up the meeting with a joint county commission and city council to meet the intern of seed about what's going on down at Grandview. He agreed to it. Uh, right now, we're looking at August fifteenth at six o'clock at the, uh, courthouse annex. How's that date fit for you?
Courthouse Annex?
Uh, the old.
County.
Admins.
Okay. Admin.
What was the date and time?
Fifth, August fifteenth. It's a Thursday.
Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. It just changed, uh, at six o'clock.
It was a Thursday last year.
Was it?
Or next year. Try next year.
Right, that was next year.
Unless it's a leap year. That, this.
Wednesday at six.
That sounds wonderful.
Uh, I believe it's great. David Hall will be there. Uh, I think, uh, we need to know what's going on. Uh, Marble Festival, Krista Kelly has asked to come to council, uh, to make a request, uh, for her closing downtown for the Marble Festival. Uh, she'll be on the, she'll be one of the items on the agenda.
Who is she with?
The festival merchants.
Yeah.
So, we're trying to even meld that event, even make it more, um, uh, one event as opposed to two separate entities doing events in different areas. So, this year it's, uh, even look more like it'll be the Marble Festival, not the Downtown Festival and the Marble Festival.
Yeah, and I think she's coming representing the chamber and the Downtown Festival.
So, we're excited about it.
Couple of the merchants are a bit concerned about the closing of downtown. They feel like it knocked some of their business out because people don't wanna park somewhere and walk and, anyway, that's all I've thought about there.
I'm sure y'all, um, are probably aware that Jerry Nappacola's left the chamber. And the board voted to accept his resignation last Friday, so. There'll be an announcement coming out about, uh, what our plan is to, in transition and in the long term of the time, so.
Just another thing I'm gonna be looking at when I come to council, the stormwater.
Is that an issue?
That's a fucking every problem.
Is that a problem?
Really, uh, if it would quit raining, it wouldn't be an issue, but it is an issue that some cities got to look at. So, I'm, I'm started looking at some stuff on there.
Y'all need to come on down to the chamber with us. I was there.
I was there yesterday. I was there.
We got folks doing, you know, all, and it's like, man. I was like, when I was a kid out there, you know, what I would be down there trying, trying to follow that stuff.
Yeah.
We talked about that at one time, what, listing the things that we thought was the number one, two, three kind of priorities as far as stormwater and the camp, the city doing some.
And that's something we need to do. We need it. It's a working timeline. Just like you said, let's prioritize it and get to the task and let's get these tasks done. I think that's a wonderful thing to do. We can do it.
Yeah, I mean, when something happens, it stays on our mind and then.
Yeah.
Something else.
Well, I know that's something planned and something reacted to it.
Yeah.
You'd work for that.
So, I, that's, well, I'm wrong, I make it.
It's kind of hard to do something with the, in between the rainstorms, though, too.
Last thing I have on my list to discuss, and then I'll open it up, is, uh, Lisa's gonna be working on the budget real soon. I'm sure in, in her mind, she's got a lot of, uh, things and, and I've got a few on mine, mine. Budget process is gonna start quickly, uh, after Monday night's meeting. And included in that is going to be a, a three-year projection of capital, uh, outlay and projects. We're gonna look at it a little bit longer. Like any three-year plan, it's gonna change.
Yeah.
If you, as you hold it in to, uh, according to your budget. But it gives us some sort of idea of what, uh.
Some sort of issue for it.
Some issue for it. So, that will be the biggest change in this budget. There's no way I'm going to be making, um, big organization changes, uh, while I'm here. But there are some positions. But there are some positions that I would like to see potentially be filled in the future. And I'll be including bunnies for that on the budget. And then whoever the next city manager is can at least have some budget money to look at that.
Well, I think also too with our stress and that we're putting on the parks now, especially when we're looking at Dorswigg and repairs that need to be done up there. We need to find some way or somehow to find some money to put more toward the parks, to make them more presentable. We still have to do the dog park, we've not done that. Put lights at the ball field. If we don't paint them and get them, we're just going to be taking them down in a few years.
They're falling down.
Yeah.
We're not going to be taking them. All right.
And you had mentioned a dog park. Was there a previous discussion of the location?
We had talked about doing it over by Dorswigg and at the, on the, not Alfer Hills, but the, yeah, over hillside of the, of the park is a little bit of area right there. I did pick up some magazines, or magazines, catalogs with dog parks. Basically, what a dog park is, is they'll come in, they'll fence in an area and they can let the dogs play. They have different sizes, that's what we'll have to decide on what we can do, what we can't do. But really, truly, I'd like to just have the dog park there, then along the trails if we want to work on it, Dorswigg, then put the little doggy bag dispensers in a trash can. You know, they should say dogs are people's new kids now. I mean, it's nuts.
If we do that, I'd like to see us get the dogs out of the park.
Oh, yeah, they don't even go to baseball. Yeah, but you don't want your kids sliding into oops.
But I mean, if you were able to.
Growing up in the country.
You know, work, work that way, we can do that and have a place for them to walk them out there and get them away from, because I see a lot of kids when I'm walking even in the chamber, and there's a lot of dogs running around.
But you see people everywhere with dogs now. I mean, it ain't like it used to be where, you know, the dogs are back in pickup truck, they got these little mini dogs, I mean, they're with them everywhere. It, to me, it's a sanitary thing and it's also a thing to let them be able to do what the dogs want to do, they want to run.
I learned the information here and all that, if you'd like to share, that'd be wonderful.
Okay.
It's a catalog?
Oh, yeah. Four hours down, she has it up there on the table. They got some pretty neat things. They think of them just like you do a park.
Y'all want to talk a little bit about lunch we had the other day with.
Robert.
Robert and the folks in our student Dorswigg.
Let me get that picture. You want to tell them about the gate?
I don't think that, they're not up yet though, are they?
No, this is the ones they got, this is what he's going to put up.
Oh. You're going to show them the picture, I see what you're saying. Yeah, Robert is going to pay for the gates, we're going to put them on two ends at Dorswiggington. Right now, we talked about what he would like to see is get more private funding and the city not pay for the stuff over there and more be a natural place rather than a bunch of stuff there. Trying to plant some plants from maybe the master gardeners and working with some people to, for birds that eat berries and this and that and the other. We did talk about having a little bit of playground equipment over there, not much, not necessarily just playground equipment, but something for kids.
And it was going to be at the parking area. We would keep the park itself pristine, the area down next to Alfer Hills or place to play.
Yeah, does the dog park present an issue with his vision?
No, it's at the playground, at the parking. That's the gate somewhere, he hung up the little yellow swinging gates you see at the school.
I saw it, yeah, sorry, thank you.
It's nice. Does it have a light up or anything more?
Yeah.
Can you let?
Oh, can you zoom in on that?
Maybe.
If I hold it still?
Well, yeah, yeah, oh, those are nice. Thanks.
We talked about maybe the city police department closing at dusk and opening in the mornings, you know.
And one through checking at lunch sometimes.
Something that's really important.
You know, so.
Be fun.
I saw that.
Because, you know, we have such a perception of that being a dangerous park, even though we've never had any kind of incidents there. It's always just in the perception.
Royal park.
Well, I believe the perception is it's incomplete. For most of the community, they look at it as incomplete, the pathways and everything about it.
And we did talk about, talk about that as well, trying to put some.
Where's this?
That's down at.
Where'd it go?
You know, trying to make an idea come along as well because we would want everybody to be able to.
Yes.
So.
All-inclusive.
Yeah.
That's important.
And, you know, when it's wet up there, it is slip, we've walked it.
But it's really beautiful.
It's got a lot of potential over there.
And we've got the small paving machine, we can create the small paving for, that's one thing that we want everybody to be able to use. You've got a lot of people in little electric cars, you've got people with wheelchairs, we want them to be able to enjoy it too.
You know, as a city, being all-inclusive is important. And that's a top priority. You know, whether you're disabled, you know, or not, you should be able to enjoy what the city of Jasper offers as a public service, especially our parks.
And we talked about getting certain people to sponsor a bench. We could work, go talk to Evan down at Blue Ridge Marble Grant, have him design us a bench. If somebody wants it, put their name on it, talk to you at church when you get up to you.
Yes.
We have had the Cousins family, Cousins being the developer of Big Canoe. Family has asked about putting a bench at City Park. They had, prior to this, put a wooden bench and a table up there. Over the years, it's gotten damaged. They're now, they've already contracted with Blue Ridge Marble, they did two benches that I told them we could go pick up and install at the park.
How wonderful.
Apparently, they're, both the parents used to really enjoy sitting out by the pond, so this is something they have wanted to do.
And that's the thing, that's what we're going to try to do, no reason, I want to give up a park budget. Anything that's wood, I might first phase it out and let's go into something that's not going to have such a high maintenance or.
More durable.
First, yeah, more durable, more not to get prone to the current.
Do we have any other kind of plan over here? I know we put the waterfall in and we talked about putting the drive-through in, but you know, when those people are coming on the tennis court side, all the parking places are backwards, for one thing.
We can probably re-straight that, yeah.
You know, because when they pull in, there's not a lot of room on this side. I know there was issues, a reason we didn't continue it on, but.
Just separated the strappings, the same strappings at their point as the right through. Probably need to look at it where we get the maximum amount of parking, or maybe we might even see about clearing an area out so we can make more parking.
Question, I think John and I talked one time about putting a dog park back in where the wooded areas there.
And we can do two dog parks out here.
And that was the location I had in mind, was over behind the tennis courts. But with the gates, we were just discussing for Dorswiggington. City Park also has gates.
It doesn't, but it makes them.
The one over by the tennis courts, the exit, used to have gates.
It does not.
It had one of the old yellow swinging gates.
Yes, it did, so it's.
But when they made it, where it wasn't, couldn't drive through it, they did away with it.
Okay.
But that may be something we need to look at. I think all the parks.
Well, I'll find out, we've got that little paper, we've used it a couple of times, so hopefully we've learned how to use it. I'd like, of course, to redo all the trails at City Park, mark off at a mile. Maybe get, if we can get Doc to talk to the hospitals, see about doing the little fitness things where you can sit down, do, you push up your setups or whatever. I mean, something like that would be awesome. And, you know, because I'll be honest with you, when Aaron started wrestling, man, how big Aaron was. When the park had all that up there, he went to that park every day and he turned into a beast before you knew it. I mean, he utilized that park.
And looking for the budget for parks, this might be an opportunity when we're discussing our trash, you know, for those that transition to a car for some that enjoy that more, if that's a possibility in the future.
I got lost today. I'm sorry.
A job loss.
You see that money?
No, 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 no. We were discussing our, our employees are number one priority, we're discussing trash. We certainly look up to the street.
And honestly, sanitation department does mow the parks.
Okay. And so that was, that was, that's another positive, yeah, that's another positive.
But the thing is, we're, we're having JY say, we're, we can let the parents.
They mow some of the parks.
Let the city maintain it, and that way it works well. In fact, to let y'all know, there is going to be fall fall this year.
Wonder.
So that is a, is happening.
Under the lines.
Yeah, so.
That's my list. What do you all have?
They moved the veterans thing till next.
Six thirty to eleven o'clock for the pounds and on the hips.
I had a citizen ask me today at lunch, who to contact, it's during the week, it's during work hours.
What did they do on Saturday?
Had some confusion about that, and so I directed them in the correct direction. They had thought it might have something to do with the city or county government, and I redirected them towards the Veterans Association if anyone questions that.
Frankly, it's.
Yes, that's who I gave the number and email in there. Very excited to see that, it's turned out.
They did a good job, didn't they?
The city has done some work down there.
Yeah, it looks nice, really is.
Do we have a runoff issue there?
Well, there we did.
Only when it's raining.
Good, good, that makes me feel better.
Only on the week days. Week days is good. We put drainage in there all the way to the.
Yeah, we're catching it and then running it all the way to the creek. There at the last bridge.
Yes.
So I'm on their board, I don't know if y'all are aware, that, that started out as about a several million dollar project of fountains and all sorts of stuff. And ultimately, we pared it down. One of the benefactors had seen a park very similar to that and presented a plan to the, to the board. And then John Travel took the lead. And we probably have a little over two hundred thousand dollar park that we got from around half of that.
Lots of.
Donated time.
Donated times. Get a chance, look at the list that's posted.
And Morris also got a chance to expand it too, they were.
Right, yeah.
I'm worried, thanks, I think.
The.
If you haven't done that one.
The rest of that green space has, the county and the city has told the veterans group that this, this is an area that you all can look at. We do have a request from veterans group to change the name of the park. I really haven't.
The entire park.
Yeah, I really haven't pushed on that yet, hadn't brought that to you. We got, I think, I think I've got some more work to do on that before we bring it to council.
Yes.
Jim, I'll need some time in executive session on Monday to talk about a personnel potentially legal issue. I'll give you the information. But again, it's nothing major, it's just something we talked about already. I'm sure y'all would. But.
Okay.
Knowing that we'll have to, any decision that we make will have to be followed. It shouldn't take real long, I don't think. See, I wanted to start right now, just kidding.
All right. What else?
Come on, you got something?
I don't have any. Parks was my main thing.
Uh, the only item that I've got for the agenda right now would be the Jeep Fest and Marble Festival.
Uh, one thing I'd like to see is.
At the executive session.
Yeah, one thing we had talked about earlier in the year, we're not done, but I'd like for us to maybe start checking on reviewing and making sure the city charge updated.
Oh, you did mention that. I do, that's another thing I have on my desk and. How about if I give, if I send everybody a copy of the, you all have a copy of the, of the charter?
Please send one out, I'm sure everyone, that'd be beneficial.
It's on the internet too.
I'm sorry?
It's on the internet too.
Yeah, it's on the internet, but I will, I'll make it easy.
You mentioned something earlier, Jim, about recording and sometimes what we're looking at last in a meeting, which is kind of being finances and money. Been studying other cities and the way they handle the council meetings, and I don't really know about this, it's just out of curiosity. How poor Ms. Lisa, if we have a long meeting, she is reading the minutes, word by word. Is that something that we require as a city for a special reason, or is that just a norm? Some other city, a lot of.
It is not required, it does give John a. It helps, it helps John.
It does, he doesn't want to change it, I did ask about it.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Heck, now everybody was.
I felt bad for her too, I was like, she's over there trying.
Sometimes I get out of wind just listening, because I know you're over there dying with a list.
There was one meeting where the minutes went on for twenty.
Yeah, we had like four meetings some up before.
Okay.
And she go, hold this down, and it is. And she had, and everybody had to go back and.
Don't have to worry about reading the minutes before the meeting. You know, we're in there.
I have to read them.
Nothing else? You happy?
Hey, what did you, you said earlier that Bill was looking at ordinances, the blind, you said the pet.
Pet ordinance, I have a request from PD to.
Oh, that's right.
Pets and cars.
Pets and cars.
Well, if you can, please get in on it, because we need to get this stuff started.
Yeah.
We've been working on it too long.
And, you know, the, the ordinance, and I'd like to see a draft or a copy of ours, pets and cars, pets in distress might be a better verbiage. There are multiple situations where the PD might have to step in, it may not include a car.
Well, I think there's, I think like y'all was in the last workshop, we had.
This was titled cruel to animals.
Okay.
So.
Good deal.
It's cruel from when they roam wild. Especially.
Speaking of your pet bear, would you like to give that to me?
I've got a pet bear that I would like to be cruelled.
I believe we will, yeah.
You couldn't kind of that bear for too long, it'd be cruel to them now, yeah.
I, the bear has been well fed by my garbage. And I got a neighbor who every monthly night puts garbage out in his front yard.
And that.
Not in a can, just in the bags. Darn bear will come over and get in my trash.
Like sugar, it's better.
Obviously, there's something in there that they like.
I'm quitting now, I don't think.
It's nine or ten minutes, that's not bad.
Getting better?
Getting better, and I'm not going to make any promises about Monday night, but there's no reason for it to.
Be excessive.
Be excessive. So Lisa, when she went, reached the minutes. September, she can have a much easier time.